I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How come all please?
Percy?
Here.
Kirby Hall?
Here.
Vandyne?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
Larry Hall?
Here.
Tudor or Studer?
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, you put up the regular meeting of the city council on December 20th, 2016 is now in session. Uh, council got approved of the minutes from December 6th.
I make a motion to reach out the minutes because someone should be there at this time.
I'm motion President Tudor, we have second.
Second.
Second by Albert Percy, uh, in discussion. Bill Coppel.
Tudor?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Vandyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Ah, yes, motion pass.
Uh, next item on the document is the bid opening for 120 North Main Street, normally known as the former Wilmington Police Department. They're putting my hands tonight, we had one bid, one sealed bid. Still no bid. Um, the bidder's name was from Rampore Incorporated. Uh, the bid is, uh, basically a see attached proposal. It is quite lengthy. And, uh, John, help me out a little bit because there's really nothing on here. Other than, uh, let's see. I know he wants. Basically they approved the payment we made in the following way. First payment by the purchaser will be a dollar for the property described by the invitation for sale on 11th and 16th. Second payment by purchaser, partially top point adjacent property are occupied by the historical society as location is shown. Third payment by purchaser, the purchaser will pay for 4580 area of adjacent property with asphalt. Uh, seeing the attached lot layout, they have pictures. Uh, number five is the city Wilmington responsible for payment imbalance of the area. Number six, purchaser will not be liable for any other kind of utilities or adjacent property during the payment process. Seven, the city Wilmington will waive all building permits and fees. And eight proposes use commercial retailer office space. Number nine, the purchaser proposal is limited to items above. This is signed by, uh, the, uh, loan bidder. Uh, it's something that we can take to, uh, committee, correct?
Correct.
So what we'll do is, uh, I know it's a lot to entail, we'll send this off to the appropriate committee. Probably finance and land acquisition, so. We'll see you guys when it comes to loan bid.
Thank you, Doc.
All right, that's a lot. All right, next item is, uh, the bear support and, um, people don't believe, as always, I've got to tell you tonight that city hall is going to be closed on December 23rd, September 26th, in the observance of Christmas and January 2nd in the observance of New Year's Day. So after that, uh, next item on the agenda is citizens comments, you have citizens comments tonight. Uh, I always ask that if anybody's going to speak, please state your name for the city clerk, she can keep that on record. If you have a name that may not be common, please spell it out for her so she can also write that too, so she gets it correct in the, uh, minutes. So this time we'll open up for citizens comments.
Uh, Sharon Michaels. Chief Arnold, would you come up, please?
Not sure.
He's harmless. I'll vouch for it.
I think, uh, you know, how much the police department means to me. I have five, five of the signs in my yard and I think about Chuck Bradger every single day. And I know during the World Series, him and, uh, you have bands. And I know, sorry, and I know how much the canine dogs do a lot. So I have to give a donation of $500, no, the canine dog more.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're very welcome, you guys deserve it.
Thanks, Sharon. All right, any other citizens comments tonight?
Uh, hi, my name is Royce 38. I reside at Waters Edge subdivision. I have been coming to the city for the past 35 years and I've been a member of, of the Wilmington rec club. And I have been a resident of Wilmington for the past 15 years. I was the original developer of Waters Edge, we started in 1996. And since then, I've had the best interest of Wilmington in my heart. I am here today to express my concerns of chicken ordinance that is being presented to the council for the third reading. And my assumption is that it will go to a decision and a vote. As you all know, sometimes I get excited when I raise my voice, so if I do while I say this, I apologize. First is I've already stated to both the city council and the ordinance committee in the past few weeks that all, that all of the pet ordinances that exist today in the city of Wilmington allow every resident of Wilmington the same right to own pets within the city limits with no restrictions other than what everyone is obligated to follow by such ordinances. Only the residents that are restricted by a landlord ordinance, I mean, a landlord or covenants of a subdivision would be restricted to different requirements other than what is in the city ordinance. And the city is not obligated by law to enforce such documents. That would be an obligation of the tenant who signed the lease or the landowner who purchased such property under the law to uphold their end of such agreement. If you vote this ordinance into law, as it is presented to you today, then you will be restricting a significant, a significant number of Wilmington residents from the right to having equal advantage of such ordinance or other, of as other residents. Based on such things as size of coop of chickens, size of chicken runs, distance from lot lines, fence heights, and all, and any other requirements that they are, can't abide by. So then by enacting them to, into law, an ordinance that is written by, but does not allow every resident or woman the same right or opportunity as a, as all residents is unfair and prejudicial and should be voted down as such. Second, as in the past few weeks, I have submitted to both the council members and members of the ordinance committee a number of articles about the outbreak of the salmonella cases that were released by the CDC, Center of Disease Control, which is a federal agency that operates within, you know, within the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. These reports that they released for public knowledge are not fabricated, but are reported to them and studies are done so that the proper info can be released to the public to make them aware of such things and how a disease can spread and has spread in communities. They can't, they, they do not release such information or fabricate such findings just to try to scare the public or falsely report info just to sway anyone from understanding the concern that everybody should be aware of. I am sure that even if there are no reported cases in the county of Will, the health department of Will County would not say that the CDC has just made up these findings and that they are not true. If that were the case, then we should say that the reports of, of the Zika virus aren't correct also. So for this reason, for, for the reason that a slight chance of an outbreak of salmonella could happen, could happen through what it was reported as a transfer through the kissing of chickens as pet owners and then spread to others, this ordinance should be rejected. Third, passing this ordinance would put unnecessary burden on our police department, our ordinance officer, our building department, not to mention city hall and its staff. And by voting this ordinance in, you would also be putting unnecessary pressure on subdivisions such as Waters Edge that have covenants that run with the parcel land. That because of some restrictions of the cousins such as fence heights, no store building or shed, or sheds allowed, would restrict anybody in our subdivision to have chickens because of those restrictions. But then as I explained earlier, a covenant that is more restrictive than the city's ordinance does not require the city, does not require the city nor is it obligated to enforce this covenant, which then transfers a burden of enforcement on that of the neighbors and or the association, and that in itself would be, would bring a necessary burden to enforcement agencies of this community. As I have said earlier. Earlier I mentioned that people who sign a lease or buy a parcel land are obligated to honor those agreements. But as you all know, that will not be the case. If this ordinance is passed, as we already have experienced, a violation prior to an ordinance can, in any kind, be enacted. We've heard the mention of 4H and the idea of being our chick, of giving our chick, our children something to make them better people and residents. If that is the real reason behind this, then I am sure that there are a number of farmers in the near, in the, within the city limits that would allow these people to raise their chickens or any other livestock on their farms. People buy houses in residential communities because they want to live in a residential community and not to have to look out their back windows, only to have to look out and see what consists, considered poultry by its definition. And poultry and livestock belong on a farm zoned agriculture for the use of such animals. For this reason, and all previous reasons mentioned both today and before, I believe the council should vote this ordinance down and just leave the ordinance as it already exists. And finally, it was brought to, up at the ordinance meeting last week about the residents who already have chickens and are in violation of the ordinance as it exists. If a resident Wilmington is in violation of any ordinance in the city, no matter what, they are in violation and unfortunately for them, because this has been brought to the public, aye, by a resident, then they will have to now comply, as the attorney for Wilmington said at the meeting when asked at the ordinance meeting. It is wrong to blame your alderman or anyone for the decision on how they vote on this matter if a resident chooses to violate an ordinance, even if it is, is misinformed by the city or anyone. An ordinance is a law that the residents of the community of the city or state must abide by. If you choose to vote this law in as it exists by the writing the way it is going to be read today, then I suggest you make three adaptations to this because my understanding is they're going to be brought to your attention that two chickens is not healthy. One, you're, you're, you're going to force them to send a notification to any property orbit within 250 feet of the person applying for this. But you don't require them to show this, that they have sent this either through certificate, certificated mail or cards bought to you that says it's been sent to these people. So I believe that if you're going to enact this particular ordinance as it is, you should make that be part of it. Two, uh, the number of chickens allowed by the way you're reading this is going to be two. The city ordinance as it exists, one of the city ordinance that exists today allows any member, any resident of Wilmington to have a total of four animals. But you make no mention that if we pass, if you pass this ordinance, will this two chickens be part of that number four? So if you already have four dogs, to have two chickens, well, you have to get rid of two dogs. So if you are going to enforce the four, rather than going to an ordinance meeting being challenged by this, I think you need to add to this ordinance, the fact that still is forced, is that whatever ordinance number is, that a total of number of four and pets is still allowed. And three, even though you're not responsible to enforce any covenant restriction that is stricter than the ordinance of the city of Wilmington. I would ask that you don't put the burden on those community members to apply or file in court to enforce what they bought into, which runs with their land, but only to add to your ordinance the fact that if you are applying for this variance and your subdivision lived to has restrictions or covenants that are going with the land, then we will not issue a permit if it's going to violate the covenant, even though that would be unfortunate, so I would imagine that would be a question to your attorney. Thank you for your time and I appreciate it. Oh, one other thing, I understand there's a petition out there with hundreds of signatures. We have a petition too, of those who are opposed. This is not a personal thing, but this is truly what I believe in. If we want to go out and get 300, we can. Remember, a petition that goes around, goes to a passive resident who if it doesn't affect them directly, will sign it. It's not necessarily whether they feel, it's what is, doesn't affect them. If it affects them directly, then they take action, like always, like you see in your own general meetings here. So I would let, understand that a petition of, of residents or putting this community through this whole process is unnecessary. We can do the same thing, there's equal amount of, there's equal amount of people on both sides of this thing. So I would ask you that you understand this, thank you very much.
Any other citizens comments?
Um, I'm Asher Noe and I just want to say that I would be more of a happy kid if you guys passed, uh, six to 12 chickens and that I'll be able to keep mine.
Any other citizens comments?
When I moved down here, my name is Michael Starkey, S.T.A.R.K.E.Y. When I moved out here, I moved out here knowing that this was a farming community. Cows, chickens, hogs, wildlife, corn, tractors, that's what brought me here. I think for this town to even, and to, to waste a whole lot of time on, I think is ridiculous. I, I do agree that, you know, there are certain sections of, especially in the heart of town where there's smaller yards, um, you know, houses right, you know, almost right on top of each other. That, you know, maybe there should be a little tighter restriction than out, like where I'm at, out in O'Brien subdivision. I've got an acre of land. I mean, I've got six chickens, sometimes it takes you five minutes to find out where they're at and they're on my land. Um, I, I, I really see this as what really should be a non-issue. I mean, it, it, farming community. You know, it, and no, I don't live on a farm. I, I've got, he's talking about 250, 250 feet away, 250 feet away is a dump line with people shooting geese out in the sky. Doesn't bother me. It, it's, I, 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 I don't, I'm just so. I don't even know the words to use, I, I just, it really, it just in disbelief that we put this much into a half a dozen chickens. I've done a lot of research myself, basically you can have chickens anywhere. I, I don't know about Inverness and kettle work, but, you know, I've, I've talked to people, every time I go for supplies at Farming Fleet, you know, Big R, for my chickens, I talk to people there that are getting the same supplies, finding out where they live. Burbank, Hills, Chicago, everybody's allowed to have chickens. And the, the, the numbers seem, the common number seems to be six, um, as far as those more suburban type of towns. Um, the resident that I talked to from Burbank, uh, just last weekend, said he thought it was four. And whether he's right or wrong, I don't know. Um, but he said that was all they needed, they didn't need anymore anyway because he doesn't, he doesn't do well with eggs himself, it's more for his wife. But I, I just don't really understand, it, it almost seems like Chicago's, the city of Chicago kind of politics here. That, that we're making a big deal out of something that really is, that I see as a non-issue. Or, you know, and like I said, maybe there's certain sections of town that, you know, you know, we don't need chickens running down Water Street or anything like that, you know, I'm sure everybody would appreciate that, but. You know, and, and the whole, the whole salmonella thing, I mean, unless you're going to start kissing and doing other strange things with chickens, it's not going to happen. It's, we, we need to worry more about anthrax and things like that, you know, with our cattle in this town. You know, that decimate this town in a couple of days. It, you know, the, the chicken thing really to me is a non-issue and, or should be, and that's pretty much all I've got to say about it.
Thank you. Any other citizens comments?
Harley Melvin, I live in Waters Edge, almost 12 years now. When I bought, it was from John Potts. He was the builder there and there are many other builders that have built the homes around me. As far as I'm concerned and know, there, when we signed on with John Potts, he did not give us any information on homeowners association or covenants. And there are people by us who have six foot fences on my block. They have sheds, they have large plague areas, and we have no complaints about it. Last year we had pheasants being raised next door to me. It didn't bother me, I didn't even know they were there. And there were quite a few of them in a small enclosure. In fact, we didn't mind them, they came, when they got loose, they came in our yard and we fed them. And the next year or two more came back. I have no problem with this. If I would have known there were covenants that were going to hold us back, that would be under false circumstances, I would not have bought or built in Waters Edge. I thought it was a beautiful area, it was nice. And the amount of bees that are there, we have close hundreds and hundreds, not only them, but also the seagulls. They are all over the peninsula and when it rains, all their poop is in the water. And all those skiers, I would think they should test the water to see how much they are ingesting of all this here. And I know they talk about salmonella, but I am a retired registered nurse. And, but education through 4H, well, and with your own parents telling you how to wash your hands, you should have no problems whatsoever. And I know there's a lot of, you know, from the CDC, none of it is really justifiable. Did people really look in? What animals did you touch? What did you do? It is statements, it can't be proven. With all the farmers in your area raising animals, how many of them are sick? How many of their children are? And I mean, many of you have done the same thing as children with your own pets. From wiggly pigs and hamsters and rabbits, people raise rabbits in their backyard, you don't hear this. I really feel that you should vote for this. I don't see any problem with it and I thank you for your time.
Any other citizens comments or see somebody, there you go.
Uh, my name is Rich Marals, I live in Waters Edge. I hear good points on both sides of this and my concern as a resident there buying a house there, I love Wilmington. I love the fact that it's a foreign community, open land, you can do what you want. I don't want people telling me what I can do and what I can't, but the problem here is regulation. I, we have hundred foot of frontage property. That means that if my neighbor is going to bring a chicken coop in that's the size of a single family home with 12 chickens in it, how can that not affect people? We're not talking two chickens, we're talking 12 with a chicken coop the size of a house. And the problem is, if there's no regulation, where does it end? Where does it stop? Maybe I'll bring two of those in and I'll have 28 chickens, where does it stop? There's plenty of farms around here, plenty of farmers would let them rent a little space and put that there, uh, right at, right in town, outside of town, wherever, to not be in a small neighborhood, tight yards like that. It doesn't affect me, I live at the other end of the neighborhood, but it's not right. Because if you don't have regulation, it's a free for all for everybody. And nobody wants to have a guy living next door to them, you keep your yard nice, you keep your stuff up, and you got a guy that's got 14 cars that he's got torn apart working on with the wheels off. Nobody wants to deal with that, that's paying good money for your house and taking care of your stuff. So that's, it's not a hate chicken thing, it's not a salmonella thing. It's about the people that are trying to bring this in respecting their neighbors' rights and thinking about how other people feel and not pushing these ideals on them and saying, this is the way it's got to be because we have to have all these chickens living together and what about the poor kids and stuff like that? That is just, that's quite, that's hitting below the belt, that's not right. We all live in a community together and we got to respect other people. This gentleman here with the six, uh, one acre with six chickens, I don't see a problem with that. He's got one acre with six chickens, right out, that's a big difference. That'd be a hundred foot from the guy with 12 chickens with a big house, you know, I can't have a shed in my backyard, I respect that. That's what I brought into. So why is it right for a, a, a chicken coop that big to be put there when I can't have a shed to put my lawn mower in? But I respect the rules because I respect my neighbors, that's all I got to say, thank you.
Any other citizens comments?
I hope that you do count the ordinance because there are people living in town with chickens. Their kids have chickens. This isn't about disrespecting someone or playing games like hitting below the belt. Lord knows, I've been the whipping boy through this whole thing. Bottom line is this, I gave you the numbers, I've given you all facts. I have not lied, I've been honest from the get-go. If you want to know the whole undercover story in regards to Waters Edge, by all means, I've been an open book to all of you to come and speak with me. Um, Waters Edge covenants doesn't say anything against chickens and that's why it's been a little underhanded. In regards to the good folks that are here that already have chickens, I think it's in the best interest to up the number from two because they all have more than two chickens. And to tell that these families that they no longer have their chickens just because someone's swatting, that's wrong. People that had chickens in this town for years, this isn't anything new. The sustainability movement that has been huge lately, it's been termed a fad, actually is not just a fad. It, it's people trying to put wholesome food on the table and teach their children how to care and mind animals. It's educational. 4H is big on raising animals. We, we ever sign a 4H, it's not an excuse, it's a fact. He would like to show his chickens. When I came into town, I'm not going to devalue my property. I invested in it, I spoke with my neighbors, everyone was fine with the chickens. One did a 180. I put up the fence because of concerns about the dogs on both sides, but one did a 180 and is now against. And I'm sorry, but people that, with a waffle, but not based on facts, based on feelings and what ifs, that shouldn't hold them sway with this, you hold them. You've been presented with all the facts, including salmonella. I've given you the number to Campy at the health department, she said, Paul, if you have any concerns about salmonella, should we put it all to rest? It is not the big booking man that they're trying to push. And I'm not going to trash my house and ruin the neighborhood. I'm a good neighbor. I came from a neighborhood where chickens weren't allowed and yet all my neighbors loved them. No issues, no calls, no complaints, nothing. I'm a good neighbor, I'm community minded. I'd like you to pass the ordinance, please, for the sake of the people already in Wilmington. There's an overwhelming majority that see no problem with hens in the city. They're already, as the city chief said, there have been no calls on chickens, so my son never called his chickens. Thank you.
Any other citizens comments?
Um, hi, my name is Amanda Noe and, um, I live out in O'Brien subdivision. I'm sorry if I get a little emotional because I'm not going to get rid of my chickens. And, uh, back in the spring, when my husband had called, they said that we were on what, 70?
Six, I was on a farm.
Yeah, we were about six, as long as we didn't have farms on. And I was really appreciative and, uh, we could pass the ordinance, we have more than two chickens. So I'm going to say, and I just really, I don't think that it would be right or human to get rid of my kids' chickens or what we already had, what we were already told back in the spring. Thank you.
I just need one more hand.
My name is Leila Melvin, I won't tie your guys' time up too much for the notes the week before Christmas. That is why I did not go out and get another 150 signatures when I'm sure I could do, because I got the 50 that I did in a couple hours. There's people for and people against this. I would like the city council not to go on the fact that there's people already with chickens because that means like Mr. Sergey said, it's against the city ordinance. I followed all the ordinances, so if I did not follow an ordinance, would you change the ordinance for me to fit my needs? That's what I'm asking, to look at the factual information that I gave you, which was from a CDC, which nobody can discredit the CDC except for the CDC. I'm sure you guys can, you know, vote for that by calling them. I ask you to look at the facts I presented for you and only the facts and base your information decision on fact only. What is best for all the residents and not just the people who have already broken the rules are asking to get the rules changed. Thank you.
Nice, you stand.
In regards to the CDC, there were 16 cases in Illinois, we give you all the facts, no doubts.
Okay, I know you do that, but, but. Any, uh, any other comments, citizens comments?
I do. First of all.
You say your name, please, with the record.
My name is Rick Brevis and I really am glad I'm not one of you guys. But it seems to me that there's something inherently wrong when you take chickens from a young kid that's in 4H. There's something wrong there. The other thing is, the trend is, people having chickens, Chicago of all places. There's no farmland around Chicago because they have chickens. We can name a lot of them. Chickens as far as having a health problem, from what I understand, Will County may have. Chickens as far as having a health problem, from what I understand, Will County may have talked to some of you guys, I don't know. But Will County says there is no problem with salmonella and chickens. There's no problem at all. I think when you take things away from kids that need things to do, and I mentioned this last week, kids cannot just sit around idling, nothing to do. They need something. Chickens, chickens teach responsibility. Teaches a young kid how to feed, water, take care of. Another thing I think is very important, no matter what you guys decide, if you check with people at Hatchery that have chickens, a bare minimum is three to four chickens. That's a bare minimum. I think six chickens, up to you guys, I think six would be just about right. I understand if you got 12 chickens, depending on where you're at, talk about acre ground, 12 chickens, no problem. The gentleman saying 100 feet, it might be a problem. But as for, as for, you have zoning violations, you have nuisance ordinances, those you could deal with on a one-to-one basis. You should just not quietly deny somebody from having chickens. I also mentioned for help. There's a lady that I give eggs to. She was so tickled to get fresh, free-range chickens for her help. Very important, the doctor tells us it's important. There's just so many reasons. So again, I'm glad I'm not you guys, hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name is Chad Cavanon. I live in town here. I just wanted to say a couple of things about a comment that was made earlier, actually, two comments. One of them is to not pass this ordinance just because not everybody in town would be able to have chickens. I don't feel it's a very valid reason. On my property, I think the way it's related out right now, I don't think I would be able to. But at the same time, too, I can't build a three-car garage if I wanted to. There's already ordinances, I think replacing little restricted sizes of buildings, replacing the buildings and things like that. The second thing, too, is in relation to the number of pets and things like that that people grow up to have. Chickens are somewhat consumable items to an extent, and to be able to limit that with the number of dogs and cats that you're allowed to have, I think would also be a, kind of a setback to the, uh...
Any other, one more hand?
My name's Josh Carmar. And I just, you know, I'm pro-chicken. You know, with a lot of the CDC comments and how valid that is. You could read about their thoughts on zombie outbreaks. See how valid some of that is. You know, as far as health concerns go with salmonella, you know, unless you're being intimate with, with somebody, you know, it's not an issue. Any animal can have salmonella, so even if you've got a dog or a cat or whatever, you have salmonella. It's just being, being health conscious, washing your hands like the, like the nurse mentioned here. And then with the zoning with the covenant, that sounds like a separate issue that people bought into. There may be some miscommunication on that. That's not, I don't think, an issue for the city council to decide. And then as far as ordinance goes, you know, I think a lot of the people that approach it feel like there maybe needs to just address the ordinance to get the, get the lights to the community as opposed to people are maybe breaking the rule and need to adjust it so that they're not. That's, makes sense on hand.
Any other citizens' comments? All right, very well. Next slide, I'm going to present the county zoning commission. Their next scheduled meeting is for Thursday, January 5th, 2017, at 5:00 PM. Just a couple of last coming in. All right, good job. The city reports for the drop parts, I'll say P, Alderman, Percy, Callan, and Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, January 11th, 2017, at 5:30 PM.
New Water Source Streets, Dallas, Widdy, Alderman, Stuter, Alderman, Curly.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, January 11th, 2017, at 6:00 PM.
Police and estimate committees, Alderman, Stuter, Alderman, Tutter.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve intergovernmental agreement by and between the Will County 911 Emergency Telephone System Board and the City of Wilmington for the funding of the 911 surcharge reallocation.
Motion, Alderman, Stuter, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman, Tutter, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Stuter?
Yes.
Tutter?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January 10th, 2017, at 5:30 PM.
By the way, Mr. President, I'm back for the mission, Alderman, Tutter, Alderman, Stuter.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the accounts payable report in the amount of $512,425.34 and the November 2016 collector's report in the amount of $930,404.05, as presented by the city accountant.
Motion, Alderman, Stuter, we have a second. A second, Alderman, have a discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Stuter?
Yes.
Evans? Van Dyne?
Yes.
Tutter?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Illinois Department of Transportation and the City of Wilmington for improvements to North Water Street and North Kankakee Street.
Motion, Alderman, Tutter, we have a second. Second, Alderman, Kirby Hall, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tutter?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Stuter?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2016-13, a resolution stating the city's intent to amend its tax increment financing redevelopment plan and project for the Ridgeport Logistics Center Intermodal Terminal Facility area, project area, and providing for a feasibility study on adding property to and removing property from the boundaries of said project area and to induce development interest within the areas proposed to be added to the project area.
Motion, Alderman, Tutter, we have a second. A second, Alderman, Tutter, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Tutter?
Yes.
Stuter?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Second reading and ordinance approving the 2016 amendment to the tax increment financing TIF redevelopment plan and project for the Ridgeport Logistics Center Intermodal Terminal Facility area. And the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January 17th, at 6:00 PM.
All right. Orders and license committee, Alderman, Kirby Hall, Alderman, Stuter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I read it correctly. I move to approve ordinance Number 16-12-20-01, an ordinance amending provision of Chapter 90, the Williams and Code of Ordinances related to prohibited animals and the keeping of chickens.
Motion, Alderman, Kirby Hall, we have a second. A second. Second, Alderman, Larry Hall. Any discussion?
Yeah. To help you folks out there that seem to think that we all know all the answers, but we don't. These people that have chickens currently in town, they were not in any violation at all when they got the chickens. The violation just came about a month ago when council decided to put a chicken ordinance out there. So they scrubbed one together real quick and threw it out there, and everybody voted yes for it. Okay? Now it becomes a violation. You're not in violation of anything till there's an ordinance created to stop you from doing something. Okay? I would like to make a suggestion to council to try to change from two to four to six. And also, I would like to make a statement to council that we should probably throw a grandfather clause in there for the people that currently have chickens that never was in violation when they had the chickens. So that's my suggestion.
Can I ask a question? Are they, unless I'm missing something, there's an ordinance on the books. When the ordinance and license committee started talking about or drafting a revision, that revision, unless it is, until it is approved, makes no one in violation, correct? Unless they violated the original ordinance?
The, the initial ordinance, which was always in place, has been in place since, I don't know if that's exactly. It's been in place for many years. I'll forget today.
Right.
The one, Alderman Hall's talk about when we changed, we changed the wording in there to separate some language. Basically, it was legal languages that we pertained to the prohibited animals section of the ordinance. Didn't want to change the scope of the ordinance, just changed the legal languages, which was recommended by the attorney, just for legality purposes. The prohibited animal ordinance has always been in place, which is basically stated that an animal that wasn't considered a cat or dog is domestic animal, is, is, the ordinance was, in its entirety was relating to, it became prohibited animal regardless of what that animal was. Whether it be a chicken, a cow, a dog, or, not dog, but snake, any of that stuff. So it was prohibited animal. However, it did allow for a, an avenue for somebody that chose to have an animal that wasn't considered a dog or a cat to be able to raise that animal on their property. And the way the council at the time is set up, it says, "If you want to do that, then you can." But you need to get the approval of 200, residents within 250 p.m. of your said property. You know, we've known this 100 times over and again. If all those people within 250 p.m. of your said property, if you want to bring, I don't know if you paid, let's bring that up, if you're familiar. They're okay with it, then you just bring that stuff to council, council will look at it, and then council can approve it. Council can also be nice, okay? Even though they got the approval of those names, that was part of the ordinance, you go to council for approval. But let's say that they go to those people, and 20% of the people within that area, whatever that number is, we'll say it was, you know, it's two, let's say there's 10 people, even two, say they don't want it. The person that has, wants that prohibited animal still has the opportunity to go to council and seek approval from the council, but the council would need to approve it by two-thirds majority or six votes per person, which is a simple order. That's in the books, it's always in the books, regardless of what happens tonight, okay? And regardless of this ordinance that comes up for debate, that ordinance will be in place, will still be in place, regardless of either way. Okay? So it will still pertain to any animal that's not considered a dog and a cat. Peaking in chickens is what we're talking about tonight, which is separate from that, okay? It allows for two, as the ordinance has been written. I know Alderman Hall has made requests for changes, but you can, you can't, the motion's on the floor for two, then. So that's where we stand, okay? Depending on, no matter what, that prohibited animal there is still in place, always will be in place. So if any other animals come around, they can abide by that one. That's how it's set, okay? So, yeah, the people probably ride in chickens long, you know, for many years. Absolutely. People have done a lot of things very against ordinances forever in any community. It's not uncommon. Municipalities in general, everywhere, are typically not proactive when it comes to ordinance violations. They're very rarely proactive. They're ordinances in the books, but if they're really specified and detailed, you know, especially when you deal with zoning issues, they're more proactive because they don't allow them to happen. Most ordinances that deal with human nature, way things go, tend to be reactive. Municipalities don't react to the ordinance violation until a situation is brought up to the, to this municipality which enforces action. That's, I think, what's kind of generated this whole, whole discussion, is something that generates action, which in actology generates reaction for people saying, "Wait a minute." You know, whether they knew or they didn't know, now they know that they're in violation of current said ordinance. So that's neither here nor there. But that kind of answers your question about, and I'll have everything go through tonight. I know Alderman, Larry Hall, Mason, she's asking for changes. Can arbitrarily make those changes? You have to, because the way, because the motion's been presented, this was then passed by committee at the last committee meeting last week, was what it says, "Worth two chickens." If I remember, eliminated the sunset clause and it's provided for the tent foot side, to the setbacks, which is pretty much cold on any accessory building anyway. That's what we're requiring now, okay?
Well, we can't ask for an amended later on down, correct?
Well, I think in, in, in anything, Alderman, I'll answer. Even if this passes tonight or doesn't pass tomorrow, okay? Doesn't mean you can't bring something up different next month if you so choose. You know, if it comes out of committee, then we go through the same process. If it doesn't come out of committee, then, you know, things happen where, yeah, it becomes repetition.
You answered my question. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Mayor, make a statement.
The way this ordinance is presented tonight, it allows for two chickens. Also, in this ordinance, there are maintenance conditions here that will say that a yard needs to be thoroughly cleaned every 24 hours. That's going to create a burden for somebody to do, whether it be our law enforcement or someone else. It also creates a, a miscellaneous regulations, creates a need to keep road and proof containers, which seems fairly obvious, but once again, it's something that needs to be enforced. And then you have a order of, from chickens, whether it's perceptible or not, that's also something somebody's going to have to ascertain or somebody's going to have to enforce or somebody's going to have to make that decision, which we're, once again, we're putting it on law enforcement. The biggest problem I have here is, I have no doubt there are very responsible chicken owners in this community. I have no doubt that there's certain people here that will do the right thing and take care of their chickens if they so choose to own them. But I know for a fact there are people in this community that are responsible chicken owners, and I personally saw chickens coming in and out of a person's garage in, in, in my community, which I found really upsetting that somebody would have chickens staying in an attached garage. So for anybody to assume that everybody is going to be a responsible chicken owner is not a fair statement. And what, also what this ordinance would add, it adds a $750 a day fine for anybody who's violating the ordinance. And the ordinance clearly says two chickens. So we're gonna make hurdles out of everybody that owns a chicken in this community by passing this ordinance today. So for all those reasons, I'm not intending to support this ordinance today. It needs to go back to the drawing board if it's going to get any support. But the way it's proposed right now, it's gonna create nothing but problems for our law enforcement, and it's going to put an actual dollar amount fine on anybody who's violating the current ordinance. So for that reason, I do not intend on voting yes on this. That's all I got.
Any other comments, council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. We're elected up here as aldermen to keep the whole city in mind in our decisions. But unfortunately, we do have four different wards, and we do have different sized lots in different areas of the city that we all live in. And for that reason, tonight, my vote will be for the people that elected me in the third ward. And I will not support the ordinance as written tonight.
If I may? I was gonna say exactly what Joe did. Because we are in four wards, and each ward has its different challenges, and for that reason as well, I will not be supporting this.
Any further comments, panel?
I have.
Oh, go ahead.
I, being the alderman of the first ward, I'm also a resident of Water's Edge. Be it what's said, Robin, you live in Water's Edge and under the covenants rules and the association rules, that is basically where we stand with this.
Wait, wait, please don't.
Where we stand with this.
I'm ready to be more generic than some of the people, okay?
Thank you.
Respect to everybody.
Okay. Everybody that, that lives in Water's Edge underneath the covenants rules, that is basically half of what a pro and a con is here. Other people in other subdivisions have it, they have more acreage, be it. I would have to say that it needs to be looked at and changed to make sure that this is under the homeowners' association. I don't know if we would have to add an integer that are...
Well, I have the current proposed ordinance, I would be happy to...
There is, well, under the current proposed ordinance, Alderman Hall, when there is talks about anything related to covenants that pertains. Okay, okay. It's in there in its form, but covenants are a different, they'll look more than this, whether the keeping of animals, we have to look at a lot of these, like covenants and others.
So anyway, any other comments?
I don't know. I left this one down. As an alderman of the fourth ward, I'll look at, talk to everybody on the phone, individually or everything else. Right now, it's been very hard, like you said, I don't make any decisions. I'll look at all the pros and cons, but as of right now, I have to go ahead and don't know. I cannot go ahead and support this.
We need to vote, we need to vote on it tonight anyways, because if it goes back to committee, it's stalemate there, and there's no need to sit on this forever and ever and ever. Everybody already made up their minds, pretty much. Couldn't get anything off the tube, and everybody talks. So you might as well vote on it tonight and find out where we're going to stand at that point. Not taking back to committee, I would not recommend that, because committee, a goal set, and nothing happened.
Yeah, I think that if motion is taken back to committee, the most, no, I understand.
Frank made a suggestion to send it back, and there was no way he would vote on something like this.
I'd like to address something that Frank had brought up. We did talk about some of those things, and the initial, the initial proposal was for a limit to the chickens. I don't know if you were there for that, but I had a conversation last week. Because we have zoning or zoning rules and zoning ordinances in place, which set up accessory buildings, like I believe Mr. Cavanagh brought up earlier, then you can't. Your law will dictate what we already allow, what the county already allows. So there's really no need to have a limit on it, because your property is going to dictate. And in regards to garages and things like that, I have a pretty good-sized garage, but it's right on my property line. So with the 10-foot setback, which I believe falls into the zoning, which you said already for any accessory buildings, I think we've made plenty of concessions. And like the mayor said, it's reactive, so if somebody complains, then somebody has to make a deal out of it, but if it's a non-issue, then it's a non-issue. I don't think we're being fair with the 750, I don't think we're being fair with the two. But I've been, I've been approached as an alderman to make sure that something gets put on the books for people who want the same thing. And, and again, I don't, I don't think it should be two, I think we should leave a blank per all our ordinances that are in place. There are guidelines that coups, that, all that stuff was discussed. I don't know why I agree with that gentleman there, I don't know why it's such a difficult issue. It can be extremely simple, but it is what it is, so that's my opinion. I just wanted to clarify that the burden isn't as great as we want to make it out to be, but, thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call both, please.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Percy?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Tutter?
No.
Van Dye?
No.
Evans?
No.
Scooter?
No.
Five, three no, five yes? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Three yes, five no, motion fails. There you go. I don't know, say that a whole lot.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January 10th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. First out, Frank, thank you.
Don't have this time, we will go into executive session.
City administrator's party, Mr. Cavanagh.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I received a letter from the IDA, just a notice that DC is applying for the Crawford Dam repairs on the Kentucky River, the area through the Rocky Road and the Hudson Roads. It's a comment period through January 4th, and we respond, but I didn't want to give comments on that. Meetings this week, the community foundation, Will County, you see how we might get in one right, in the Wilmington area. We had a meeting with CMAP today in the downtown study area to have that conversation going. We met last week with the Will County Freight Advisory Committee with the Center for Frack on Development, the JOLI, and continue to work with that. We had a kickoff meeting in the West Side Study Area a couple months ago with A Associates and VESH and ESR, as well as shopping design to include discussions going on there, so keep me to visit.
Oh, yeah. Most definitely. Attorney's court, Mr. Urban.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, Colby, Frank, and I, as our second meeting, our phone conference with I-DOT, we discussed it a little earlier, and I've also been in contact with the attorney for West House, and we're hoping to have the closing for that.
All right, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session at 7:55 PM for matters of personnel and land acquisition.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, we have a second. Second, Alderman Kirwin, roll call both, please.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tutter?
Yes.
Van Dye?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Scooter?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
All right, a motion to come out of executive session.
I make a motion to come out of executive session at 8:20.
A motion by Alderman Larry Hall, we have a second. Second, Alderman Kirwin, roll call both, please.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tutter?
Yes.
Van Dye?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Scooter?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
You, no action taken tonight regards to the executive session. And before we adjourn, I'd like to wish the entire council, staff, everybody, audience members a Merry Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you again next year. So motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Merry Christmas, everybody.